Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Palermo's. Appset Row.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and our marks by Councilman Harding.
Be seated. I know everyone's not here to listen to my opening comments. They want to be here to listen to the mayor's budget, which we'll get to in a minute, but I did have a couple of comments I wanted to make. So here, here we sit as Omaha City Council, and there are but six of us here, and there should be seven. When we finish with today's business, and we have adjourned, a milestone shall have been met, and it's not one that we should celebrate, or hold in honor, or read a proclamation for. It marks the expiration of any Palermo's unexcused absences for a period of three months from our meetings, and thus is now subject to removal from his position of District Four Representative of Omaha City Council. Assuming Mr. Palermo does not appear at any time during our meeting today, his clock will run out. For the past three months, District Four has been without its elected representative, and assuming his non-appearance today, and assuming a resolution that this body would consider likely next Tuesday to permanently remove him, it will put in place a process to select a new representative to serve out the remainder of the term, which has just but short of two years left. This process will be open and transparent, the details of which will be finalized once, again assuming the resolution to remove him occurs next week. However, this process will likely take the better part of two months before the new representative would be sworn in. At the end of the day, District Four will have not had representation of its duly-elected official for five-plus months, way too long. I know we, as a council, all six of us, committed to picking up the slack in this lurch, and I think we've done so to the best of our abilities, but I also want to thank the council staff for fielding calls, responding to emails, and working on resolutions to the issues of those in District Four. About three months ago, I asked for Mr. Palermo's resignation. I thought by doing so that he would be doing right by his constituents and the city. He chose not to. I was not doing that based upon any perception or determination of guilt; that's for the legal system to decide. But not being able to attend city council meetings, he could not fulfill the duties to which he was elected, and therefore, that's why I asked for his resignation. The people of District Four deserve better, and the people of Omaha deserve better.
Madam Clerk. Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here this afternoon. We look forward to hearing your comments on our various items on our agenda. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. We do have one proclamation today in honor of Maha occurring this weekend, but because we have the mayor here today to also present the 2024 budget, we'll first do the budget, and then that proclamation before our meeting starts. So Mayor, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. Council President Festerston, city council members, and citizens of Omaha. I am pleased to be with you today to present a recommended 2024 budget. How we spend our tax dollars must reflect the services and programs that best serve our community. Whether it's public safety, roads and infrastructure, parks and libraries, or economic development, our spending must align with our priorities, and our 2024 recommended budget does just that. We must always work to keep taxes as low as we can. Since my first year in office, we have reduced the city's property tax rate three times. Our budget recommendation for next year includes our fourth property tax rate reduction of 2%. The city of Omaha's share of your property tax bill is just 21% of your total bill. So while other taxing entities have a combined far greater impact on property taxes, we will cut the city's tax rate whenever we can. With the city council's approval of the 2024 budget, we will have decreased the city of Omaha's levy by over 8% since my first year in office. There is more good news about your property taxes. Three years ago, the Omaha voters overwhelmingly approved our $200 million bond issue to create street preservation fund. It pays for the unprecedented ongoing program to substantially increase road repairs throughout Omaha. Voters also approved to raise property taxes to fund it. As a result of the street bond issue passing, through the end of this year, we will have spent and committed to an additional $163 million of roadwork above and beyond previous funding dollars that were available. This additional funding was completed without voter-authorized tax increase. A strong economy, conservative financial management, and existing bond capacity allows us to fully fund the program without higher taxes that the voter approved, something that we are all very proud of. For 2024, we recommend a total general fund budget of just under $508 million. This is an increase of approximately 7% over this year. This increase is primarily to address our police recruitment and retention crisis, and I'll explain the police proposal shortly. We project an increase in revenue due to our strong local economy and the extensive economic development in our city. Sales tax receipts for next year will be up just over 7% compared to the 2022 actual. Property tax revenue will be up about 8% if current projections hold through. Another indication of sound fiscal management is the balance in our savings accounts. At the end of last year, both the cash reserve and the contingent liabilities fund had balances of about $30 million each. This compares to just $5 million or less in these accounts when I became mayor in 2013. In 2024, we will increase the cash reserve fund again. Our savings and strong year-end budget balances help us plan, enable us to manage emergencies like COVID, and allows budget flexibility to avoid increasing our taxes. These are good things for Omaha, and they're good things for our taxpayers. Even with another property tax rate reduction, we are able to fund several important additional expenses in the 2024 budget. Most significantly, we propose a substantial salary increase for the Omaha Police Officers, which accounts for more than 2% of our total 2024 budget increase. While already, we have a contract with the Omaha Police Officers Association that sets the 2024 salaries, we must further increase pay to meet several challenges. It is difficult now to recruit new officers and to retain those with valuable experience. The Omaha Police Department is currently budgeted for 906 officers. However, 811 sworn officers are currently on the job. That's 95 fewer than our budgeted number. Even after an extended recruitment period, which included television advertising for the first time, we had only 340 qualified applicants, a fraction of the number that we historically have. The declining pool of law enforcement candidates is a national public safety crisis, and we must address it now. We must offer higher competitive salaries to improve recruitment and hiring of new police officers and retained experienced officers. We are the largest agency in the state of Nebraska, and we must be the best. In May, we announced a tentative agreement with the Omaha Police Officers Association to raise salaries in 2024. Our current proposal, modified since the May announcement, will cost more than $9 million additional dollars in the 2024 budget. This is in addition to the 3% wage increase already in the current labor contract. If approved by the Omaha Police Officers Association and the city council, we in Omaha will have the highest starting salary and the highest top pay for officers in the state of Nebraska, and greater than other metropolitan cities of similar size throughout our nation. This is an incentive, and it is an investment in public safety and our police officers, and investment in our police officers, and it is definitely worth the cost. Other important highlights of the police budget: Eight new civilian positions are planned to bring a total number of the department's civilian employees to 169. And, as we have planned, 2024 is the first year the city will fully fund the mental health co-responder program, following several years of private foundation support. The fire department's general fund budget will go up less than 2%, with 687 sworn firefighters and eight civilian employees. These numbers include 18 grant-funded firefighters. We will continue to purchase new equipment according to the Fire Apparatus Replacement Plan, which creates a timeline to replace and standardize all frontline of our fire apparatus. We must always have up-to-date, safe, and reliable apparatus to provide the best fire and emergency medical response possible. This replacement plan anticipates continued growth and demand for service throughout our city. In 2024, we plan to spend $9.2 million replacing fire apparatus. Our library budget for 2024 reflects our commitment to a world-class library system and the continuation of many exciting changes that we will see in the next few years. The increase in the library operating budget is just over 8%. We will add nine positions next year and continue to build the staff to prepare for the new central library opening at 72nd Dodge in 2026. Additional positions will be required in future years to prepare for and manage this and other library facilities. Our new downtown branch is now open, and it's very busy. Since opening day mid-May, more than 15,000 people have visited the new location at 14th and Jones. And we recently announced a citywide library facility plan to improve all locations of all of our libraries over the next 20 years. Now we must make sure that we budget for the proper staffing and materials at all of our libraries. Growth in the Public Works Department operating budget is modest, just over 3%. We will hire an additional nine employees next year to assist in areas such as facilities management, sewer maintenance, and water resource recovery. In the Parks Department, we will add three positions, and we will increase wages for lifeguards and camp positions to continue to attract and retain high-quality employees. We will also buy new and upgraded equipment for the Parks Department, like lawn mowers, trailers, and other small equipment. The Planning Department will begin the first total overhaul of our 30-year master plan in 2024. When first written, the plan was focused on suburban growth. Today, infill development is critical to our future, as is transportation, environment, active mobility, and affordable housing. This will be a three-year process involving significant community outreach. Three new employees will help us develop the plan and implement it after the city council approves it. The planning budget also includes $800,000 for demolition of unsafe properties. And in 2024, our housing inspectors will again increase the number of inspections of rental properties to 3,500. We anticipate the post-COVID economic rebound will continue next year for tourism and the convention business. My budget recommendations reflect that expectation. The convention and Visitors Bureau budget will just be over $10 million, which is a 20% increase to bring more people into our city, spend more money, and enjoy the amazing new attractions that we have in our urban core. The Luminarium, the Steel House, Jean Leahy Mall, and in three weeks, we will open Heartland of America Park and Lewis and Clark Landing. All of these great venues and public spaces are great selling points to bring more visitors to Omaha. Healthcare insurance costs for employees and retirees will increase approximately 5.5% next year, in line with the last year's increases. Of our total healthcare expenses, about 75% is earmarked for the Active Employment Plan, and the remaining 25% goes to our retiree plan. All city employees are now under one healthcare plan, except the fire department, which provides healthcare through its own fire trust. The fire trust continues to be, however, the most expensive healthcare plan that the city funds. Every year, we dedicate a small portion of budget to several dozen community service programs that have proven their ability to help those in our community. They provide services such as employment and job training, youth mentoring, domestic violence prevention, services for persons experiencing homelessness, and many others. And I am recommending a significant increase next year for the Nebraska Humane Society. The increase to $1.6 million will enable them to meet the demands of the population that they serve, the animals that they care for, and the challenging budget times that they are now experiencing. We will also provide funding for lards and gardens for the first time. The garden is located on city-owned property. Along with our 2024 general fund budget, I'm pleased to present to the council today our capital improvement program. The CIP outlines long-term significant investments in transportation, public safety, public facilities, parks, and environment. It details projects and funding sources. The six-year total for our proposed CIP is $3.2 billion. I would like to highlight a few CIP projects, exciting changes that will further enhance our quality of life in Omaha. We will invest $54 million at Tranquility Park at 120th and Maple to create a premier youth multi-sports complex and tournament facility. We need more high-quality athletic fields to serve youth throughout our city. Upgrades to Tranquility Park will provide greater access for all players throughout Omaha to allow us to host more regional and national tournaments. We will develop at Tranquility as many as 16 synthetic turf multipurpose soccer fields and up to 11 synthetic turf baseball and softball fields. Parking and concessions will also be greatly improved. New hotels, restaurants, and retails are also expected near the complex. The 50-year-old facility is the city's only public soccer complex, and it will continue to be managed by our Parks and Recreation Department. Construction is expected to begin with the soccer fields in 2024, with all the improvements completed in 2027. The Harney-Farnham Bike Way project in the CIP will realign the current protected bike lane so it can accommodate and better align with Omaha's new streetcar when completed. The CIP also includes $306 million for the streetcar. In 2024, $147 million of that cost will be allocated to parking and mobility division, parking capital fund for construction and procurement-related expenses that will be underway in 2024. Our recently announced Omaha Public Library Facility Plan includes the new Southwest Library Branch, something we've been working toward for a long time. The CIP includes funding for this new library, and we are currently identifying property to buy to where we could build this branch. And finally, planning continues for a new joint public safety headquarters for both our fire and police departments, which is now included in the CIP. I encourage citizens to look and to learn more about our general fund budget and our capital improvement program. I take this important responsibility of managing the city funds very, very seriously, and we do so with transparency and commitment to excellence that the taxpayers expect. Both the city budget and the CIP are now available for your review on the city's website. The budget is on the Finance Department's website, and the CIP is on the Planning Department's website. Thank you to the council for all of your input and your ideas, and thank you very much to city staff, department directors, and especially our finance team for their commitment to excellent work, especially Steve Curtis, Andrew Brock, and Nicole Sweeney that have helped so much in the preparation of this budget. A public hearing on this budget will be held in this chamber August 8 at 6:30 p.m., and I encourage citizens to attend and to provide feedback. It's truly an honor to share this budget and our priorities with you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor indicated, the budget and capital improvement program will have a public hearing in this chamber on August 8, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. And as we transition the diocese here, we'll have Councilman Bagley read a proclamation in honor of the Maha Music Festival, which occurs this weekend.
And since since inaugural concert on the riverfront has welcomed more than 100 musical acts, dozens of speakers, and attendees from across the country, the city of Omaha is proud to have this large-scale music festival in our community. And whereas Nebraska is home to thousands of working musicians, artists, chefs, comedians, poets, and other creatives, Maha Festival continues to evolve into an annual collection of experiences that reflect diverse cultural aspects of the community and region, with the festival being instrumental in celebrating creativity by providing a platform of regional and national significance and scope. And whereas Maha Music Festival attracts thousands of visitors to the city of Omaha each year, and Maha Musical Days will broaden awareness of the 1,000 individuals who come together for the good, the greater good of our community and create the festival. And whereas Maha Music Festival will be held one final time at Stinson Park in Exarban Village before moving to the riverfront in 2024, a move that will make the event an even larger attraction for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Omaha officially designates July 28 through July 29, 2023, Maha Festival Days in Omaha, Nebraska. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 25th day of July 2023.
Thank you. Are there members of Maha that want to come to the diocese and tell us about this year's festival? Just your name and address to start.
My name is Rachel Grace. I'm the co-director of Maha. I'm at 1907 South 10th Street.
Emily Cox, co-director of Maha, 5307 Newport Ave.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Bagley, for reading the proclamation. I think there's not a whole lot, like, that really sums up well everything that we're very excited about this weekend, but I just really want to take a second to reiterate how excited and grateful we are to have been at Exarban Village these past 13 festival seasons. It has been a wonderful ride, growing and evolving, along with the other businesses alongside us in that time, and we're so very happy to have had the opportunity to do that, just as we will be happy to move next year and continue to grow and evolve. So thank you for that. I know that the 13,000 people that will be joining us this weekend and the more than 800 volunteers, for many of them, this will be kind of a bittersweet weekend, just, you know, because we've grown so accustomed to being in this wonderful home in Stinson Park. But, you know, as we prepare to say goodbye to the area, and we are looking forward to supporting the local food restaurants and to celebrating the neighborhood as a whole. So thank you for that. In general, we're just really glad that we are living and working and existing as a nonprofit music festival here in the city that just has so many options to support creative opportunities like this. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And tell us about your headliners and how to get tickets.
Oh goodness. Well, Friday Night Headliner's Turnstile, which was nominated for three Grammys, they are a hardcore punk band, however, they are easy on the ears, easier than you would think. And so, you know, rising to the top of mainstream popularity. Our Saturday Night Headliner is Big Thief, arguably one of the largest, almost an oxymoron to say, one of the largest indie or alternative bands in the world right now. They were also Grammy-nominated and put on a very good show. Tickets are available at mahafestival.com. I hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me hand this proclamation to you.
Good luck. We'll see you this weekend. Madam Clerk.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Secret Park located at 3207 Leavenworth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Councilmembers Andrew Collins, Erickson Cedarstrom Law Firm, 10330 Regency Parkway Drive, on behalf of the applicant. I'm here with the principals of Secret Park, Mr. Eric Barons, his wife Tricia Barons, and the designated manager, Mr. Jay Schwartz. The bar is at 3207 Leavenworth. It's the former Bud Olson's Bar, so kind of an old Omaha staple, and the Barons have purchased that or redeveloping it and intend to reopen that. Mr. Barons and Mrs. Barons have made contact with several of the neighbors, including the HOA there at Leavenworth Park. Haven't heard any opposition, have heard a whole lot of enthusiasm for getting the bar back opened again. So we won't waste any more of your time. With that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Eric, it's good to have you here today, if you want to come up for just a second. Appreciate the conversation we had, and for your, I guess for the record, put your name and address, if you would, please.
Yeah, Eric Barons, 710 North 149th Avenue.
Appreciate you coming down today. It was great meeting you and your wife, and the redevelopment in that part of Leavenworth Street, there's, as we talked, there's a lot going on, and you want to give a little brief for everybody listening, what the old Bud Olson's, now the Secret Park is going to be?
Yeah, so bought the building from the Olsons about a year and a half ago. Renovations and construction started in February, and we just hope to open a neighborhood cocktail bar. That's part of that revitalization in that stretch of Leavenworth that you spoke of.
And it's not a restaurant, it's just a bar?
There is no kitchen. It is just a bar. Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to support this, and I, you and your wife have great ties not only to Omaha, but that area, which is great. Your roots are there, and it's great to have you back here in that, that growing area, and I'll wish you nothing but success.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion in a second. To approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Touch of Class Lounge located at 11220 Fort Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, good afternoon. Stephen Rand, I'm from Croker Huck Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant here, Touch of Class Lounge. I'm with Mr. Badley, one of the principals. This is a, it was an existing bar, new owners, so we're here before you for that.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class CK liquor license for Rub Rotisserie Urban Bistro located at 11220 Fort Street. Item nine, to consider a Class CK liquor license for Rub Rotisserie Urban Bistro located at 1917 South 67th Street, Suite 110.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Carlos Mendez, 4607 North 176th Street. I'm representing myself for a Ventlyt Hospitality LLC. I'm applying for a liquor license for a rotisserie restaurant, fast casual restaurant that I want to open in Exarban Village. We are in the process of building the space and having it hopefully ready by middle of October.
Great.
I've been just as a feedback and kind of let you know, I've been in the industry for over 15 years. I was the owner of Espana, Espana in Broadbrook. I currently have an restaurant in Benson as well, so.
Both of those are great. We appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve this, and I appreciate you coming down today. And you're in the HCR building, right? Is that where you're going to be at?
Correct.
Okay. Well, your experience sounds great, and that's a great venue and great location. So I'll wish you, again, nothing but the best, and I'll look forward to sneaking in there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there a motion, Mr. Bagley?
Yes, sir.
Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for North Omaha Music and Arts located at 2510 North 24th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Dana Murray, North Omaha Music and Arts, 2510 North 24th Street. We're basically upgrading our current Class I so that we can have an outdoor music area in the back. We're going to be partnering with some local organizations to put on some concert series on our property. And much like our music festival, we have to get an SBL when we do that. And our current liquor license allows a six, and the catering license will allow us 12. So that's one of the big reasons.
Great. Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 11, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Dundee Days on Underwood Avenue from 49th Street to 51st Street on August 18th from 7:00 AM to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there. I'm not sure if Stacia is available. Her kid is at a doctor's appointment. I'm here. I'm with the Dundee Dell. Oh, perfect.
Do you want her to go first, or do you want to go first?
I'm here. I'm just driving my daughter to her kindergarten checkup, so I'm not really here. So he's kind of filling in, so.
Okay, if you're, if you're driving, don't talk to us.
I'm not.
Okay. All right. So Stacia, you're just here to answer questions, right?
Yes, if needed.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good. All right. I mean, it's simple. We just, I think we just want to, you know, have the festival play music, serve alcohol until midnight. We did it last year. It went very smoothly. We'll have a tent for checking IDs, a resping system.
And I don't think I got your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Andrew Wilson, 4229 A Street.
Great. Thank you both for being here. I'll ask for other proponents that might want to speak. Seeing none any opponents. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing and just say, I'm supportive of this. You guys do great work at Dundee Days, of course. I'm sorry to miss it this year. I'll be out of town that day, and our band won't be able to play, which we always enjoy doing on that afternoon. But I know you'll do a great job, and it'll be a very successful Dundee Days again. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Quick comment. I 100% agree you do check IDs because I went last year and I didn't have mine, and I had to have my daughter bring it up. So they do check for IDs. I'll be supporting this as well. Thank you.
It's because you look so young.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you so much.
Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Copper Ridge Replat 58, located northeast of 157th Street and Laurel Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I make myself available for any questions council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion a second, roll call. Harding, Harding motioned and Rowe seconded. Yes.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Westbury Creek 3 located at 4625 South 216th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. This is a small addition to the Westbury Creek subdivision. You have planning board and planning department approvals. Ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 13? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Bungalows at White Hawk Lake located at 4205 South 204th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a one-lot plat, three-out lots at the southeast corner of 204th and F Street. It's a kind of missing middle housing type project, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular project.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion a second, roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for Civic Corner located at 1804 Capitol Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item 16, an ordinance to approve a second amendment to a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Civic Corner LLC.
Public hearing and vote on items 15 and 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council members. Dan Dolezal, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. We're the project engineers and surveyors for this project. I've been doing this for more than a few years, and this ranks in the top 10 of the projects I've worked on. It's really exciting to see a piece of ground get developed that has been vacant for such a long time. I'd like to thank the planning department and the planning boards department for working so well together with us to create a plan moving forward that is both realistic and reasonable to all the parties. In the audience with me are members from White Lotus to answer any questions you may have about the development.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon, members of the council. Jay Klein with White Lotus Group, 2036 North 48th Avenue. Here to answer any questions, but I've been told that some people would kind of maybe like to hear a little bit about the project as well. And I've got some images that may be new to some folks but familiar to others, and I'm happy to kind of go through those and kind of give a short overview on the project if that would be valued by the council.
Please do.
Yeah, awesome. There we go. The zoom in and out. So what we're taking a look at right here obviously is the site. And the most exciting thing about what we're working on at this point is the reintroduction of the streets, in particular 18th Street and Davenport. You know, when we first started embarking on the redevelopment or contemplating the redevelopment of the site, the streetscape was not something that had originally occurred to us. But as we kind of went through it and we were discussing with city planners and just looking at really healthy neighborhoods, not only in Omaha but in other cities, one of the things that became really obvious to us was connectivity and pedestrian-friendly spaces. And large mega blocks sometimes are a bit of a challenge for pedestrians to interact with. And, you know, we're in Omaha, Nebraska, and we're very spoiled. We love to park right in front of wherever we want to go. And the reintroduction of the streets really helped with that. And so as we started having the discussions with city planning and other members at City Hall, we were getting lots of very encouraging comments. So we've moved in that direction, and essentially what it does is it kind of divides Civic Square into four developable blocks. And I know as it kind of looks here, it looks like there's three, but you can't really bring Davenport all the way through because we have an existing parking structure there. And there's also quite a bit of grade, and so it just made practical sense to provide a T sort of in the middle of the development. Nevertheless, it makes for very natural phasing for the redevelopment of the site, and we think that that works really, really well. Don't have a lot of experience working with overhead projectors since grade school. So this is, this is kind of a bird view shot of the, from a south, north-east perspective, looking southwest, and does a great job of kind of showing the development in all of its context. The image right here is 480, so it just kind of gives you a perspective of where we're at. And then the 17th Street parking structure here. And the existing parking structure on 19th Street right here. So as we kind of look at, actually, I'll go back one more here. As we kind of look at the development as a whole, we kind of envisioned it as like the legs of, four legs of a stool. And one of the major tenants of that was affordable housing. When we had early discussions with the city, the desire to bring affordable housing to the urban core was very significant, not only to the mayor's office, but I think our conversations with stakeholders in the community, that was something that many wanted to see more of. And it's difficult to do affordable housing as it is. It's even more difficult to do it in the urban core. It's helpful when you have a city that is participating alongside. And so we heard in the mayor's budget earlier, all of the investments that the city is making, and particularly in the urban core, and a lot of those have been tremendous. And it takes that type of investment by city governments into their urban cores to make them healthy and successful. And we're seeing it here at the former Civic Auditorium site as well. So we're currently contemplating the affordable housing here in conjunction with health and wellness. And then just to the south of that, right next to the existing parking structure is where we're contemplating an urban grocer. 15 to 30,000 square feet is sort of the target with residential above it. And then directly to the east is about, the way that this is depicted, about 100,000 square feet of commercial office space with some retail on the podium. And then directly to the north of that is what we consider market rate. And we're also taking a look at the feasibility of some single-family for-sale units as well. And so then just kind of to look at them as individuals, here's a perspective, really kind of coming from Creighton University's campus, looking southeast towards the proposed fitness club and the affordable housing just to the east of that. And as you move south along 19th Street, you'll notice the parking structure there. It looks a little bit nicer than the current skin that's there. We've had some really collaborative conversations with Park Omaha about what it might look like to integrate the existing parking structure into the new design for the site. And I think there's some really great opportunities there that we're exploring. And as you move a little bit east there on Capitol, and you come to what the new intersection with 18th Street will be, this is a perspective of the proposed urban grocer with the residential above. And just across 18th Street from that is the proposed office space. And this evening shot, I think, is really exciting. Just kind of gives you a really nice pleasant view of a part of downtown that has been pretty empty for a while. So that's sort of a quick little overview of it, but happy to answer any specific questions should you have any.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other proponents that want to speak?
I just wanted to make sure that, Arun Agarwal, 9814 Ascot Drive. Appreciate the opportunity. I do want to reiterate, and Jay did an eloquent job, that even the ability to get to this point is in true partnership with the city. City has been incredibly thoughtful in pursuit and allowing us to introduce the streets. I think that will make a better project. It'll make it much more sustainable. It'll be much more inviting for users to come into the urban core. I think all of the stakeholders that are around this area have actively been engaged and are actively participating in conversations, whether something that they might do on the periphery of the site or on the site. But I do want to reiterate that the true partnership that's already been displayed is part of this process and applaud that because it's going to make a much more successful project.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hello, Luke Schrour, 2522 South 33rd Street, Omaha. I am actually really excited about this. I used to live 14th and Douglas, so just right over here. Whichever direction. I think it's back this way. But anyway, it's exciting to see something that when I lived downtown was just an empty lot. I used to walk kind of underneath the overpass there, and I would cut around that because it wasn't interesting. Something that excites me with these plans are, if you notice at the crosswalks at intersections, there's a bump out that makes that walking length during, at the crosswalks. Can I use your pictures, by the way?
Go ahead.
Okay. There's one that does, this one does a really good job of showing this bump out here. That crossing length for pedestrians is shortened when we build our intersections out. So it's exciting to see that our development now is kind of leaning into that, making things more pedestrian-friendly. I noticed we do have two parking lots flanking this whole thing. So as somebody who likes biking and walking, I would like to see even less parking, street parking. But you know what? This is exciting regardless. But I know we like to park right in front of the shops and places we like to eat. But if we do park a little bit farther away, you have those chance encounters to walk past a store and say, do you want to pop in for coffee or something? So yes, we are making things easier by parking right in front. But if you own a business, you kind of want that foot traffic a little bit because that's going to spur that spontaneous, oh, let's pop in here and see what they've got. But this is exciting. At the end of the day, it's going to connect our downtown to all the development to the north a little bit better. So I hope you consider this because I consider it a step in the right direction, and I'll quit rambling. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jay and Arun, if you guys could come up, please. Appreciate that. First of all, I would like to thank you guys both for taking the time out of your schedule and engaging me, the district representative in which this lovely facility will be. and engaging me, the district representative in which this lovely facility will be built upon. You know, the respect that you gave to me in terms of educating me what you wanted to do here and the opportunity for me to ask questions so that I in turn could sell this item to constituents in which I serve is very, very important. And I just want to give you guys kudos for doing that. I appreciate that very much. This building, this development, I mean, it's forward-thinking, very high-tech, lots of things to, for people to shout out about. It's more industrialized and future in terms of us going forward. And so, you know, the whole picture that you've displayed here is very engaging and also convincing. More importantly, we possibly have the opportunity to have a store which is well overdue. So without further ado, I will be in support of this. I move to approve this.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you.
I'll second. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jay and Arun, good afternoon today. I also wanted to thank you guys. Right when I got on the council, we had conversations, Arun and you and I did, and Jay, you and I had several, talking about all kinds of things going on in the city, and then this came up. A tremendous project as you guys presented this today, the health and wellness and affordable housing. I wrote down, you said, "Affordable housing to the urban core." Huge thing. When I, and all of us ran, I'm sure it was, a big topic was affordable housing. And your commitment to the details of this, it was impressive from the beginning. So as you stand before us here today and we discuss this, I'll absolutely be supporting this. And I wanted to just ask a couple of questions of either one of you. When do you anticipate the groundbreak into this? Do you have an idea? I know you got a lot of things you've been navigating with supply chain and other things, but do you have an idea in your head at least when you want to get rolling on it?
Yeah, I think based upon the entitlement, which is part of this submission where we're at today, this kind of concludes a big part of the entitlement process. I think we actually go into civil design, so true infrastructure design occurs now, which would lead us to about a spring, spring of next year when weather breaks, would be a fair time to see civil infrastructure start.
Okay, and I know there's been, Jay, I think you and I have talked about this, some, a local news story a few weeks back about the proximity of a grocery store. There's Cubbies down in the Old Market, but, you know, people say, "I got to go to Baker's, I got to Hy-Vee," and I know you guys are working hard to address that. And I can tell you, I deeply appreciate that, not only for Councilmember Johnson's district where this is, but the Old Market, which is my district, it's a big thing and the job this will bring in the health and wellness of affordable housing. I am really enthusiastic to support this. And as was mentioned also, that site's been sitting there for a while dormant, and there's going to be a lot of action coming in the spring. So I wish you guys the best of luck, and I think this is going to be a great project for anchoring downtown. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bagley.
Thank you. I have one question for you, then I'll maybe I have a question for Ms. Taylor, too. I agree that the grocery component of this is really important. How would you assess that at this juncture? Is that definitive or is that still a work in progress?
I think the best way to answer that is everything, the entire project is a work in progress. It always will be. One thing I do want to point out is that we've actually designed this to fit, I know we talk about parking and absolutely appreciate some of the comments that were made earlier, but this is also sized to what we can, we believe is feasible based upon parking that was on-site. Already, we've had conversations, I think Jay had mentioned, with Park Omaha and City Hall regarding what opportunities exist. It's flanked by additional parking, so there are opportunities to scale and densify. There are, and we are going to pursue every single one of them. If it was our, if money was no object and feasibility, we'd be building skyscrapers and everything, right? So that's certainly densifying the site is of goal. We are actively in conversations with grocers. This is a unique lift. Grocers are made where house, you know, where rooftops are, and so we have to be mindful and realistic about what that vision needs to be. So Hy-Vee announced a store, you know, way out west. That's where the rooftops, that's where suburban, that's where new schools are being built. This, we have unique sales strategies associated with this. We have a Creighton University with 10,000 students and faculty, right? That becomes a very big. We're putting housing and rooftops on the site, another coup towards the strategy. The city's doing its part and investing in the urban core, which increases rooftops and participation. The site uniquely, and this was a miss from, at least from my perspective, is how easy as it relates to the urban core, this particular site has the best ingress egress in all of downtown. It's missed because we don't use that exit. It's a dormant exit, but it is phenomenal for this development. So if there, I shouldn't say if, when an urban grocer comes to downtown Omaha, we're confident that this would be the site that would be logical. And I would tell you that we're having meaningful conversations towards that.
Thanks. And that's why I asked. I know it's been a tough thing. We've been wanting to have, happen for a long time downtown, but I sure hope it can happen here, too. Do you feel like the property itself is most likely a phased development, or are you attempting to do everything pretty much all at once?
Yeah, I think, I think that we have to take it as it comes, right? So we're showing, I think, one correction, you know, the office is actually shown at 200-plus thousand square feet, right? So, you know, urban office is not very high on the economic wish list today. So to put that on this, the great thing about this plan, the reason why we are so excited about it, is that it offers optionality on how to develop it. So certainly, housing, we could scale and we could introduce that. Of course, if we can bring employment into the district and into the urban core, it augments it. I think everything we have to take as it comes with, based on demand. So I can tell you that the housing, both all types, market, for-sale, affordable, I think there's demand, and we've engaged third-party market studies as it relates to that. The retail component, we think that we're already seeing demand for that. The healthcare component, we are at late stages conversations as it relates to that. So there are components, significant components, will actually augment the ability to do the rest. But to answer your question, realistically, yes, it would be phased in some fashion just because it's very difficult to align everybody's expectations.
Thanks. And then Ms. Taylor, if you would. Just a question for the city pertaining to the sale agreement here.
Good afternoon to the council. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Thank you. So this is not a reflection upon the developer. I have a lot of confidence in what they're doing here and their track record and what they're showing us, but this property has had a lot of stops and starts over the last many years. So I want to make sure this comes to fruition and the city maintains some control and cement trust over this construction cycle and tenants. And the means by which to do that is through this agreement, right? So should, for whatever reason, construction not occur in the next two years, there still is a clawback provision in this contract that would allow the city to still control what would happen here, right?
Correct. The agreement requires the developer to commence construction, which means to begin construction by footings and foundations, footings and foundations is usually how we look at that, within the next eighteen, or the eighteen months from closing. So if they don't do that, they would get a notice of default from the city, they would have an opportunity to cure, and if not, the city has the right to repurchase the property.
Thanks. I do think that's important to include. I think we kind of learned our lesson on the old Union Pacific site back in the day, that that's an important provision to have in any new development downtown, so I appreciate that that's in there.
Correct. It is something that we've taken and make kind of a standard provision, most of our purchase and sale agreements.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm supportive, too, and I seconded the motion. I don't see any further lights. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item seventeen and eighteen can be considered together for child-saving addition located southeast of Forty-sixth and Dodge Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seventeen, an ordinance to rezone this property from Geo District and GI District to Geo District. Item eighteen, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items seventeen and eighteen are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon again. Dan Dolezal, Aaron Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham. So it's pretty easy to see why I enjoy my career so much because I get to do these types of infield projects that we've done for, I've been doing this for 50 years, so this is, this is a blast. Anyway, this is a significant building addition to a, to an agency that's doing some incredible work with the children in our area. It's cleaning up a bad intersection at Forty-sixth and Dodge Street, creating a gateway that's going to be linked in with the unit, M.C. campus. So I'm here to answer questions, basically, but it's just a terrific project.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed, five to zero. Harding Epstein. Items nineteen through twenty-two can be considered together for Hartwood Residences located northwest of Pacific Street and Applied Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nineteen, an ordinance to rezone this property from R4 District to R5 District. Item twenty, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this district into that property. Item twenty-one, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Randy Kuchak with Lampard Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant and here to answer any questions you may have today.
Thank you.
I apologize. Is this the Hartwood Residences?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Luke Schrader, 2522 South Thirty-third Street. I, I think I got a message from one of the council members on their, on my thoughts on this, and I do appreciate that, being that my council member is not able to be in contact with, so I do appreciate that email first off. But this development is exciting for me. I got a chance to look at their website. There's lots of green space. And in, essentially, what this is doing is designing in a way that we have a neighborhood again. It's making that Main Street-type thing. So we have our businesses walkable to some density, and there is some single-family housing in there, I believe, also. But this is the kind of thinking that we should be doing as a city. It's financially going to be more beneficial to us to mix our uses more. There's a school kind of in the center of it, I believe, also, and I see lots of walking paths and biking paths, so that can give options to some of the students if they want to take other means to get to school. Lots of opportunity to be outside and having less paved surfaces, so rainwater and stuff is not just running down and getting into our storm drains. So this is very exciting to me personally. I did see on their proposals, a lot of trees in parking lots also. That's going to help with heat island effect, where the sun on these hot days heats up our buildings and our streets, and then that's released slowly overnight. So the more trees and permeable surfaces we can have within our city, it's going to bring down our temperatures, not only in the daytime, but nighttime when all that is released back. I guess, I think I had some notes, but that was my main takeaways from it was just getting back to that neighborhood-type thing, because we all love walking through a place like Dundee, where you've kind of got that Main Street feel within the city, walkable to duplexes and having different shops and places to eat. So personally exciting, and I hope you look favorably upon it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, oh, she's abstinent, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Items twenty-three and twenty-four can be considered together for property located northwest of Thirteenth and Pine Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-three, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District to NBD District. Item twenty-four, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in the NBD District.
Public hearing and vote on items twenty-three and twenty-four are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. My name is Scott Los, 10836 Old Mill Road, excuse me, here on behalf of the developers. This is a 59-unit apartment, office, retail complex at Thirteenth and Pine, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Coulterman, 515 North Thirty-eighth Street, Omaha. And my office, Chem Contractors, is adjacent to the property directly south, and was here for the initial meeting, I think it was the planning meeting. And we still haven't had a neighborhood meeting to be able to talk to the developers about the project and its impact on the neighborhood and address things like parking, location of entrance to their parking garage, et cetera. So not opposed to the project, not opposed to the rezoning, but just don't have information, and we were promised that we would have a neighborhood meeting, and that still has not occurred.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Sean, can you come up? Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down. I saw in the planning board meeting that you, it was on the record, that your concerns were parking and this, access to the streets and parking, and I know it was stated in that meeting that there was hopefully going to be a meeting sometime in May or June. So you were saying there, you never got contact about any meeting at all?
Correct. Nor did any of the neighbors who've all reached out to me.
And one of the questions I know that was posed was the Pine Street there that, were you told there that that wasn't going to be closed during, when this project is built? Or what were you told?
We were told that that would be the, up to the discretion of the builder.
Okay, thank you. Scott, can you come up, please?
Scott Los, 10836 Old Mill Road.
I did reach out to the attorney. Would you be willing to have a meeting with the neighbors if I made a motion to lay this over just so we can make sure?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I became aware of this fact here today. I'm kind of the dumb civil engineer, but there's some background meeting work that probably needs to be done. We'd be happy to have a layover to address that.
Okay.
I know Sean and I talked way back when, and I gave him some of the information on the ownership and assumed that was progressing to satisfactorily answer questions, but obviously it hasn't. So in fairness to him, I think we're certainly agreeable of that.
Okay, is that a, Mr. President, I'd like to get a layover on this if we could, just so we can make sure. And I'd like to attend that when we get that set up. If you guys can exchange information, you probably already got it, but if you could shoot me an email as well, I'd like to, or if you could give our staff your information.
Yeah.
And I'd like to attend that, just so we're all on the same page.
Very well, yep. We're agreeable.
Is that one week and continue public hearing?
Can we do it in a week? Yeah, lay it over for a week, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, a neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, we'll be good.
Okay. The motion is a one-week layover?
Are you asking to do that in a week?
That, that would be, yeah, I mean that...
I'm out of town all of next week.
Can we do it before next week? So it's Tuesday before next?
I'm looking at Larry in Brent's office. We'll do our very best.
Okay.
Let's talk, we'll round up the troops when we get back and see if we can do that. Does that work for you, Sean? Sometime this week?
Yeah, as well.
Maybe Friday or something.
It's always a fast pace before heading out of town, but...
Will that work for you guys? I want to do this right.
Yeah, we can make it work.
Okay.
It's just probably if ownership or the client and Sean... Yeah, we can make it work. It's just probably if ownership or the client and Sean's available, yeah.
Larry, do you need to come down, or are we good on that? I hate to speak for you, I never want to do that.
I know Brent Beller would like to have been here today, the attorney, but couldn't, and so Larry's here to fill in, maybe speak for him.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road. Brent is out of town, and he called me and said, hey, can you just go down there and watch over this? So that's what I'm doing here. I don't know really anything about the project, other than there was this neighborhood meeting that apparently was supposed to take place based on what happened at the planning board. So I, I don't think there's any issue with laying it over, and maybe what you do is you lay it over for a week, and if they can't meet, you just lay it over again for the, the second week until everyone can get together, but I don't think there's any objection to that.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
So we'll work on that?
We'll work on that, we'll keep you informed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Yes, so that was the motion and the second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson is absent. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items twenty-five and twenty-seven were held on July eighteenth. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson is absent. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
There's been a request to remove items number forty and forty-one off the consent agenda with amendments of the whole to each of those items. So first, we'll have the public hearings on agenda items twenty-eight through thirty-nine. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Items twenty-eight through thirty-nine. Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty, a resolution to approve the appointment of Joseph Bradley as a member of the Omaha Library Board.
Public hearing and vote on number forty is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-one, a resolution to approve the appointment of Michelle Frost as a member of the Library Board.
Public hearing on number forty-one is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Second.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-two, a resolution to approve the nomination of Dominique Morgan Street as a commemorative street name on Taylor Street from Twenty-Fifth Street to Twenty-Fifth Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-two is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Kathy Tyree. Address is two two five North Twelfth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh two. And it was my honor to submit this application on behalf of Dominique Morgan, and I won't belabor, I submitted all kind of information and supporting documentation, but just wanted to be here in case there were any questions.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Kathy, for submitting this opportunity to have another notable person in our community recognized by a street renaming, and I really want to tell you, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule, and again, I'll be supporting this. Thank you. Motion to approve.
I'll second. No further lights, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-three, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Tiffany Riker versus City of Omaha, and the amount is sixty-five thousand dollars.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-three is today, proponents please.
Matt Kuzey, City of Omaha Law Department, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion and second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item forty-four, an ordinance to approve the twenty-eight sixteen Ames Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number forty-four is today, proponents please.
Don Satan, City Planning, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, on behalf of the developer. Happy to answer any questions, but i-if you'll humor me, just wanted to circle back to the issue of outreach that came up last time from Councilwoman Johnson. I think we made strides there, but I also wanted to correct the record a little bit of, because I fear what I said may have given the wrong impression regarding the Planning Department playing down or dissuading any sort of outreach. That's not at all what I intended. The discussion was that, you know, because formal meetings with a neighborhood association or a, you know, a, an active business district weren't necessarily available or applicable, that I should very much reach out to Councilwoman Johnson, which I did and will continue to do. But like I said, I just wanted to, to correct the record, because the Planning Department is always very consistent in their emphasis on, on outreach, and feared I conveyed the wrong message. So appreciate your time, happy to answer questions.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Vote is next week, I believe, just public hearing today.
Um, oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, no further lights, next item.
Item forty-five, an ordinance to amend section twenty-three dash one seven seven of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning employment classifications by adding the employment classification for concrete finisher personnel board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number forty-five is today, proponents please.
Claire Anderson Hubbard, City Human Resources.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Non-action items, items forty-six through sixty-seven do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
It's now the City Council's intention to go into executive session, in which we will only discuss labor negotiations. Is there a motion?
Move to go into executive session?
Motion and second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Time is three seventeen.
We did discuss labor negotiations. I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Time is three fifty.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three fifty.